I was, I'm a little more concerned about the, um, just any more than a team citizen. And we're letting them sit down first.
Do you have any feedback, feedback as far as recommendations from past meetings that you can share with us?
I'm so sorry.
So first, I wanted to address the issue of the media in the room. Um, so we've had community members ask that the members of the media not leave. And that you not be filming, so that we can have a honest and open conversation. And, uh, people do not fear the possibility of being recorded. It is an open meeting, it's an open public meeting. We can't make the members of the media leave.
Also, if possible, I'm, I'm asking if we can have two microphones for the community to, to talk. Cause you're the loudest one, and when we talk, we're not being heard.
More chairs and microphones are coming. So we're, like, we are trying to adjust as we're moving through. Yeah, in the back.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Duah Lee Sai Kao Tao, I'm with Minnesota Public Radio. Uh, we do not need to record, but we would like to get permission to record if there are moments where we would like to do that. So, I just, I was like, um... I just wanna say that I'm a representative of, of the media. My name is Duah Lee Sai Kao Tao with Minnesota Public Radio. We will not record unless we get your permission personally around the table. If you, you know, prefer us not to, obviously, we can give you that space. But I do wanna just let you know that we will be recording natural ambience and in private conversations, we will approach you to ask you personally for your permission. And if, if that's permissible for folks. And if other media wanna represent or introduce themselves.
I raise my hand if I could have my question. So, I grew up in Maple Grove, I sort of, he started saying Paul, I started of congregation in Plymouth, Minnesota. If we could wait for the, for the, the mic to go around, so... The point I wanted to raise was that I think, so this isn't a one-off. That if we could have sheets, if you want to have an email list group of next steps and build momentum, so that we can coordinate better. I think having some emails and things go out is a good way to organize, that's what I wanted to share.
Okay, I'd just like to speak to the fact, the statement I just made, I'm half-white. Um, I'm simply asking why black voices are not prevalent. And number one, in this room, in community engagement, specifically dealing with the Black Lives Matter issue. Specifically dealing with a black man being shot. Specifically getting to, we don't even have time for our feelings these days in America. We have to solve these problems. When we tried to meet with the mayor at his office multiple times, I'm talking about more than six times, he would wait in his room and listen to us, right? Okay, so the fact that you are representing the mayor's office right now? Why would you not allow the black voice to come out before this? And why are you facilitating this meeting without conducting, like, a proper host? A person of color to initiate this type of community meeting? Do we have answers? I'd rather, I'd rather, you know what, I'd rather share the microphone and allow these people of color? If you can, if you can help facilitate some of that? Cause that's, that's the real truth that's gonna come out right now, right? That oppression needs to be released. And these people need to share their opinion on the solution. We don't need to talk about our feel, I, I don't need to, I should just speak for myself. But right now, I need solutions. As a black person in Minnesota, I need solutions.
Hi, I am from South Minneapolis, born and raised, this is my hometown. I love Minnesota, the state of Minnesota is still one of the best states in the country. To raise a family, to work, to live, we have work to do. We have so much work to do. And we need to start with the police department. It is full of corruption. If we want order in this state, we have to start with the police department. There are missing 911 calls. There are missing police reports. 2015, there was an evidence room fire. 2012, there was evidence sitting in hallways in a lab, and evidence in St. Paul. Where's all this, where's, where's, where's the justice? How can we defend ourselves when the police department is mishandling their cases? The next steps is going to the Department of Justice. The next steps are going to the Capitol. I'm talking about Washington DC, because it's not just here. Milwaukee is just across the way, we know who Clark is. Minnesota, Milwaukee, and Min, and Wisconsin have been in bed together for quite some time in the corruption in the police department. Let's talk about the next steps. Let's talk about drug testing. How come we're the only ones that have to drop every time we get pulled over? If he's got a gun in his hand and he uses it, he better drop. I want blood tests, I want a hair sample, I want a urine test, I want a breathalyzer. What was his state of mind at the time of the shooting? These are the next steps. They should be held accountable. We pay them, they work for us. While you're in the business of helping build a new prison? Five generations here. My grandfather came here from Missouri to raise a family. I have been a victim of police brutality. I've had police in my house, in my home, when I called them and ridiculed me and chastised me and throw cigarettes in my yard when they got out of their cars. You don't know the half. This is the discussions that we want to have.
First, I wanna say I'm respectful for everyone here, but there is a reason that I'm here. I don't see too many others around, there's a few, there's a few of us black men. My first question is, the relationship with police officers and the black men, why is it the way that it is? Why? I should be able to cry comfortably, walk comfortably, sit outside comfortably, just like everyone else should be able to. There's one more thing I wanna address, I wanna talk the rest of the night. I read the news every day, I watch the news in the jury. If you weren't with the police, if you are anti-police, dismiss from the jury. But if you were pro-police, if you're with the police, you're accepted. Every fight, every sin, where? Relationship with black men in society has to change. Just because in your neighborhood you didn't have it, you're not comfortable with it, doesn't mean they're bad. It's gotta stop. Why did gentle, kind, caring black men, I didn't interfere with everybody?
First of all, I wanna say thank you to you. So, I really, really wanna thank you for what you just said. I think it's so, so incredibly crucial to really be talking about why it is that some people are targeted by the police. It is disgusting and it needs to end immediately. And I wanted to say this, um, I was in the trial, I was sitting through the trial from every minute, from the very beginning to the very end. I was sitting with the Castillo family. And what you said was exactly right. Every juror that had any issues with police was dropped like a hot rock. Every juror that even later it turned out that they were writing all over Facebook, pro-police stuff, they were kept up in jury. And that was the truth. And that jury was rigged, and I'll tell you something else. You couldn't be smarter than be on that jury, they made sure it got rid of the smart people too. Now, that said, we had a protest here Friday night, people know about it at the Capitol. Young people, we had, we had about 5,000 people, a lot of people came out because people were just grief-stricken over this, this verdict, as they should be, and just furious about it. No, there was 5,000, I, I knew it. Um, and the bottom line is that some of the youth decided they wanted to take the highway. Um, for good or for ill, whatever you think about it, people need to express their outrage, and they did. And 18 people were arrested Friday night. In addition to that, we have people that got arrested in the previous highway blockages and other protests. And so, what I think the city could do right now, as a sign of good faith, is to drop the charges on... Drop the charges. As it is now, as it is now, all the protesters have spent way more time in jail than Yannis and other black citizens. I know you represent the mayor's office, but you have contacts, you oversee the city attorney's office. You, one phone call could get these charges dropped. And while we're at it, they need to be dropped on Louis Hunter. An innocent man. And the community needs to stop having to defend people for our rights as our own. I wanna say one more thing, and then I'm gonna shut up. I wanna say one more thing. You know, we know that Yannis was with the St. Anthony Police Department, we're real clear about that. We understand that. We know that that's a different department. But in the time since Philando Castillo was killed, we have had multiple African-American men killed by the St. Paul Police Department, and that needs to be addressed. We need to take that on as well, not just, you know, we need to be grieving, we need to be upset, we need to fight back when these kinds of things happen. But I'm telling you, you got a problem in St. Paul with police as well, thank you.
Thank you, I wanna just say thank you to this man here. And I want to ask if there are any lawyers or, I appreciate your input that you were at the trial. Um, I had the opportunity to go a couple of days off and didn't for a variety of reasons, I'm sure many people could understand. But, so it's nice to hear the perspective of a citizen that went, but I wanna expand on what he said. And I would like to know if anyone knows the truth that one of the final jurors after they made the jury selection, which we know was cut from people of color to mostly white. And that was not an accident, it never is. But if anybody knows the truth to, the truth to, the truth to the, the reports that have been, went out, that there is a woman that ended up in the final jury pool that works with his, Yannis' wife? So that, is that true or false? Is that something that has been verified? And then the other question is, for those that were there for the jury, um, selection, weren't there two jurors that were already dismissed for being close to the Yannis family prior to the jury, the final jury pool?
Yeah, I was here for the jury selection as well. One was a cousin, and one was a near neighbor. Um, and then the one person, you're right.
Out of the state of Ramsey County, they found that many people that are close to Yannis for the jury? Okay, so how do we, in, with respect, with respect to the passion, cause I know, I mean, so many of us are so passionate right now, can we try not to? So just, the people that are helping facilitate this, can we just try to get to some, some knowledge? That's why I'm asking these questions about the jury and about the law, because we're gonna all have opinions till the day is long. But what we need to know is how do we address the law? Because the law is set up this way for a reason, the juries are set up this way for a reason. And I wanna say something about John Choi. I, I followed his career way before this, this, this trial. And he is a fabulous district attorney, you're not gonna find very many district attorneys in this country, let alone this state, right? It's his first charge of police officer in this state. So, I think people remember John Choi's name, if you live in that district and his name comes up for reelection, do not let the right wing, do not let the right wing come in and swoop in. Cause if you think things are bad now, wait till we get a right-wing district attorney. Please protect John Choi. I'm saying this as somebody who's followed his career from before this trial. I don't know what your politics are, but this is, this is a man who fights for not only women's rights, but he is, he went in and he made a charge with something he felt he could win. If you can't win on manslaughter too, you can't win on anything. This is my, this is my opinion, and I'm not gonna, you know, be attacked, I'm gonna speak my mind just like the rest of you. But I, I just wanna mention that because I followed his career, I know what he does for women and domestic violence. So I'm not gonna back down on that. I didn't come here for politics, I came to say, if you, if you wanna, if you want things to be a lot worse than they are now, get a right-wing extremist, it's what they've been trying to do with this trial, they've been trying to politicize it all over the country.
Okay, uh, so, I, I think one of the solutions is that we need more people of color on the police force. You know, if we have people in our communities that look like us, then we can have some real policing. But when we have the good old boys in blue that come, and they're, all of them are white, and they come, and, you know, when they come and pull us over, it's three cars deep, so you got six. You know, we need more people of color. So the city needs to hire, they need to make that a priority, to hire more police offers, officers of people of color. You know, it should not be two white officers always riding in the car. You know, they need other, uh, people of color, so we can have some diversity and have, you know, people to come out and understand the community that they're working in. They should, it used to be that they have to live in a community. So, you know, there needs to be some change, and it needs to be from the top down.
Good evening, um, I have two comments. I don't know. So, my first one is, this time around, when the protest happened, I sat with my pre-teen son, and we prayed, cause we thought that this time, the police would show up and they would have t-shirts on that said, "Your lives do matter," and would have marched with them. I believe that that would have brought so much unity and healing to the community, both, on both, all sides. Um, so, maybe that can be a suggestion. Um, because the relationship with police varies greatly depending on if you're of color or not. We are taught to be fearful of them by experience. White people are taught to praise them by experience. And so, if we can bridge that gap, and when we do speak up and show out and protest and march, you know, if they would march with us. And not even affirming the Black Lives Matter, but affirming your life matters. Um, my other comment is, you know, I watch the news all the time. And every time there's a tragedy, you always see folks do these GoFundMe pages for that particular incident. And I didn't see that for Diamond and her baby. And she's gonna have a lifetime of trauma behind this. So I think it would be a great step towards Diamond's family. I don't know her, but I feel so... I'm embarrassed now, I'm sorry. But I think it would be a great step towards bridging that pain with her family if it was started by our elected officials with a statement as to the reckoning of the trauma that this incident caused her family and others.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for all for coming out tonight. I just wanted to show my face here, because I don't really get invited to a lot of the things that go on in the city, for whatever reason. And I was invited here tonight by some peers on Facebook, I'm back on Facebook, um, just so that people can stay connected with me, stay connected with my family. And I wanna support you guys like you guys have been supporting me. It's very unfortunate that an innocent man's life was taken away, not only in front of myself, but in front of my child. I wanna get closer. It's very unfortunate that when things happen in our community, our higher power, police, judges, whoever, they assassinate our, assassinate our characters and make us look like the bad ones. When we're not the ones, I'm not, for sure not the one who did this to myself, but my community has targeted me. My daughter and I seek therapy, but therapy can't help what the community has done, what the officer has done. It's unfortunate that we do not have real rights that protect us from law enforcement. My daughter is not in Minnesota for the summer because of these circumstances. Because she's not able to go to a public school and be herself without being treated differently. She's not able to go out in the park and make friends like a normal kid would, because she's being treated like she was the one who did this, like I was the one who did this. And all I wanted to do for everybody in this room is to show them that we use all of this technology. And technology can make you and it can break you. And it's just unfortunate that I put myself and my daughter's life in jeopardy to record something so traumatic only for a verdict to be told it was not guilty. So me putting my life in danger so that every single one of you here can know what Minnesota has been sweeping under the rug for many years? It's not something that just started when I pressed record on my camera. Any chance that you guys have an opportunity to let your voices be heard, do so. Because Philando, Phil, he was a great man, he was an honest man. And it's unfortunate that the people that I have to tell my daughter is here to service and protect us is not here to service and protect us. I have not been able to find a job because of me recording something. I have not been able to find housing. I have not been able to find just love within my community because I did something by recording. I love you guys too, I love those that love me and I support those that support me. So I thank everybody tonight, please keep my daughter in your prayers. And when she returns home in August, I just hope that y'all keep her in her, in your prayers. Cause she has an amazing first grade, that she's coming into first grade. And everything that she experienced, her nightmares, her telling me every day that she misses Phil. That y'all think about that when y'all raising y'all kids. There's not one white person in this room that can't tell me that they don't have an African-American loved one in their family. And it hurts me to know that there are so many people above us that are not doing the right thing. It's very unfortunate that you guys have the power, the means and the money to make Minnesota great again, but is not doing what your job description says that you was put out here to do. You went to school to, to be law enforcement. You guys went to school to be doctors and lawyers. You guys went to school to serve our state where you also live. But if we're not treated equally, then why are you working?
My name is Ken Quayz, and, um, I, I very much go along with the, the two speakers in front of me. But, um, I feel, uh, responsible as a citizen. I think we all should feel responsible. Um, maybe I'm naive and too problematic, uh, but this is how I see the, the, um, the public protection that is given by the policemen and women. Um, I see them as professionals. Um, skilled like a surgeon that, uh, has to, uh, learn how to use his tools. And I feel like a police person should be skilled at how they use their one tool, a gun. Um, I, well, no, I mean, you know, all the tools, but, but to, um, to shoot to de-escalate the situation. And, um, why, why were there seven shots in any situation? Would a professional person be doing that? And I think we need to look at the police training and, um, because it's, you know, what you're talking about is such a complex issue. And, uh, each individual, we, we need to kind of work on our own, um, feelings about people that have different colors. I mean, you know, it's, uh, we're all the same. But I'm worried... Well, well, I think, I think, I think we are, in the, in the, in the sign of us. But, but maybe not treated the same. Oh, I, you know, I can't, I can't talk for, uh, someone, you know, that didn't grow up the way I did. But I can make a suggestion about police training, and I think it's very important.
Okay, um, keep the cameras off my face, please. I don't have a lot to say, but this is just something that I would like to share with you all today. I am not a victim of police brutality, but I am a victim of racial, I'm a victim and a witness of racial profiling. This is something that happened to me and other... This is something that happened to me and other, a group of other black people on the city bus today, as I was making my way to this building. A group of white police officers got onto the bus, and they were looking for someone with possession of marijuana. Now, there were only a few of us colored people sitting on the bus, maybe about four or five of us. The rest were, all the rest of the people were white people, European descent. All of the colored people were asked to get off of the bus, and we were all searched. Now, I had this, this small bag with me. It doesn't have anything in it, but, um, a comb, you know, binders, charger, my phone. I was searched for marijuana and other drugs. And then I was questioned to see if I knew anything or anyone who had anything to do with it. After I was done being questioned and searched, I got back on the bus, and then I witnessed a young black male being assaulted by a white police officer. Now, this young man was, he was very dark. He had dreads, and he was wearing a blue sweater. This man, I believe, he didn't have, he didn't have any drugs on him. He didn't have marijuana, he didn't, he didn't have anything on him. He was just carrying his backpack, you know, with school stuff in it. And I believe that we were only, we were only pulled off the bus because we are, because we're black, or because we are of color. We're, we're, our skin's of color. No one, no one else on the bus was pulled off or questioned or searched. There were plenty of young white males, young white females. There were even old people. And out of all of these people on the bus, us four or five young colored black people were the only ones pulled off, searched and questioned out of all of these people. This young man... This was the sixty-fourth. This young man, after being, after being searched, the police, you know, went through his backpack, they checked his pockets, and they questioned him. And I did not, I didn't hear the conversation, I didn't hear what was going on. I don't know what was said. But after a few minutes of just sitting in my seat and watching, I witnessed this young man forcibly being turned around, put up against the bus, and handcuffed. And the police officer was screaming, yelling commands at him. And the black, he just, he just sat there, he just stood there, and let the police officer handcuff him and do whatever. And all during this time, the police officer was just, you know, putting, putting a lot of force on him, you know? He was shaking him, you know, just being really aggressive. And, like I said, I'm not, I'm not a victim. And I don't think, I don't think I look like someone who would be in possession of...
Due to them.
Of drugs. Yes, I do to them. Thank you whoever said that, I know that. But it is, um, it is, it is no longer shocking to me to witness these things happen, because you hear about it, you hear about it everywhere, you see it on TV. And it is only happening to the black, the black community. It's only happening to us. Yes, it is, it is because we are black.
This testimony should have been on camera, so it could have been...
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna say thank you.
Yes, go ahead, take, take my testimony, but I ask, please, respectfully, to keep my face out of your cameras. That is, that's all I ask. That's all I had to say, something I wanted to share with you today.
Okay, so I'm not a woman, um, but I'm only like twenty-two, so... Oh, oh, go ahead. We, no, we, nothing but love. Um, I'm only like twenty-two, so when the verdict came out, um, I wasn't surprised, more disappointed. Um, it was, it was more like one of those things like, dang it, you let us down again. Um, but I think we start with police training, like she said. I agree with you on the police training part, because I don't see how we train the military to not shoot pedestrians in other countries, but yet we can get killed and shot for being a black person, for being Mexican, for having long hair, for mistaken identity. That's, that's, that's too crazy, there's a baby in the car. That's like, that, that, that makes no sense, there's a baby in the car. Um, so like, for our military and for our trained personals that go out of the country to be trained to, to take care of another country better than we take care of our own is sad. Like, that is, that is extremely sad. And then, um, so, I'm a, I'm like, I'm a youth developer, so I work with the youth. Um, and I also think it starts with them, and starts, um, with the community. And I, I don't necessarily like, I don't want to sound too cheesy, but it does start with the police coming down to the rec centers, because I will tell you this, like, there's not too many police officers who come here. Um, and like, for, for, for the young lady over there, like, I've worked with her. So like, when stories like this come up, like, we gotta be the ones to talk to them. Um, we gotta be the ones to help guide them through. And I think it's important as a community that you keep your bias out of it, and you keep your love in front of it, so that way you can help these young kids grow up, and they can, um, better guide them way through it. Um, but with that being said, we got a lot of work with the police system. And, and not just police, but like, the government in general. Like, we got a lot of work on, um, if not rebuilding, reconnecting some things. Because it wasn't built for colored people, and we all know this. Um, so I think it starts, you know, back with the community. Like, what we're doing here, I think the conversations are good, but when you go home, I know all you guys got jobs, but now it's time to go to overdrive. We don't got twenty-four hours. We gotta put more than twenty-four hours into a day to make this change happen. Um, and to, you know, keep pressing forward with it, because it's, it's sad. Like, I'm twenty-two and I'm numb to it. Like, it doesn't make no sense. Like, I, I've been racially profiled by the police, by white people, um, by, like, for mistaken identity, for being big and having dreads. I don't have dreads, I've never had dreads. I've never been bigger than this, you know? So that's, that's the crazy thing. So we got a lot of work to do, um, and that's all I have.
Yeah, I want to add, number one, when we first got here, there was a question about lessons learned. So all these young people, Miss Diamond, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a child of the sixties. So what I've learned, and what I've observed from law enforcement, their utility ba, belt consisted of a billy club with barbed wire wrapped around it for the riots of some sixty-five, sixty-eight. Um, dogs, mace, and water cannons. If you look at the way the officers are equipped now, their utility belts, it's like they're militarized, uh, head to toe. So one of the lessons we're learning right now, and even listening to these young people, the lesson is one of blood. You know, we're just getting bloodied up. And it seems like you guys in government aren't really paying attention. So that goes to my impact, uh, question. The impact of your non-actions are mistrust from all of us in the community. Keep on talking about what can we do, what can we do to come together, band together? There's a whole lot more mistrust. My, uh, statement at the last meeting was, how are we gonna get officers to trust us, work with us, when you have the same training officers with the old-school mind? So you can't teach me if you're an officer from the forties, fifties, where busting heads was okay, it's still okay. And that's prevalent right now. When the young lady spoke up about officers on the bus today, when you roll up, officers roll up, three, four squad cars deep, they're there to bust heads first, not de-escalate anything, not find out what's going on. People of color are the ones being bloody and on the ground. Like you said, right now, you're already, uh, emphasizing this new prison, uh, privately-owned prison, that, uh, they're about to start up again and house us as a way to, um, I guess, justify things. But if you're gonna change things, and I'll recognize one guy here that I know personally, where I could go up to him, he's law enforcement, I won't point him out, but I, I was able to go up to him every single time. I grew up with officers from my community. I could go up to, hold that conversation, and then he could de-escalate whatever at any time. But there's a guy here, you see that subway all the time, walk right up to him, and, and hold a conversation with that man. Where are officers like him? How come he's not pointing out the bad officers? He was a good officer. Why can't we give decent attention? But point out the good officers, encourage the good officers to come and work with us. You can't just come up to us on the holidays, here's a hundred dollars. When you pull somebody over, we're already afraid. We don't need your hundred dollars, we need you out of our face. Let us go and about our business. But the man I'm talking about, if we can get more like him, who's one of the rare good apples, because now the barrel's full of rotten apples. And I think we can all, a whole lot of bad apples, I guess. But we're gonna have to come up with a solution, everybody, to try and get along. But the resistance, it seems like it's coming from law enforcement, not us. You see the community at all these meetings, no feedback from prior meetings. So it's like, that's, that's a problem in itself. Like I said, this is a third of, of eight meetings scheduled. But when I asked you earlier, what feedback did you have from those previous meetings to share with us? None. None. So what are you guys doing when you go back to your offices, your committee meetings? What are you talking about? Anything we're talking about? So we can do better, and we have to do better. This young generation is gonna be the ones who vote the older people out, so they can take over and actually make a change, make change happen. And we're all looking forward to you guys stepping up, my generation.
Okay, my name is Marisa, and I wanted to say, I do agree that there needs to be training. Me and my friend, um, were a part of a community, um, group in North St. Paul. And it was the most disgusting thing ever. We witnessed a cop specifically say that he's trained to not de-escalate, but to kill. And none of the other police officers, the sergeant, nobody even corrected him. Exactly. And me and my friend were in a group of, I think it was, I was the only one of color, and there was, or was there one other person? There was one other person. Nobody else spoke up. What they did was they taught us how to shoot guns, um, and some other stuff. There was some other positive stuff about, um, the thing. But there does need to be training. And I honestly feel, these meetings and stuff, I don't actually feel like they help, because I never see change. And I know some people get irritated by people getting aggressive and getting angry, but my personal opinion, and I'm not afraid to be in the media, I think there needs to be action. Because everybody continues to be quiet. When you're quiet, nothing happens, because I shouldn't be afraid for my son to be outside.
Okay. About the protesters that got arrested that Friday, hey, that Friday night, for standing up for their rights about the black African-American community, I see you taking notes that you're gonna do something about it. How about we put everything on pause for the next thirty seconds, and you make that call right now? No, 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 you can't do it right now, busy, busy? Okay, that's fine. Um, okay, um, first off, before I make an introduction to myself, I want to tell you guys a story of what happened. What really happened that Friday night, where all the communities came together to help the black African-American community and the assault and the killing of a black man from police officers in the United States of America. And this is especially to the social media that does not cover this part of the story. On Friday, June sixteen, two thousand seventeen, America witnessed the unjust of the justice system. Five thousand two hundred members of the community in Minnesota marched to protest against the outrageous verdict. It was sad for me to admit and say that Philando Castile feeds monk American kids with meals on a daily basis at schools, but it was sad that the monk community were slim to none, except for one. This man had witnessed, this man witnessed firsthand. This man had on a red bandana on his face, and a rag, and, and a plastic ski mask, and a black baseball cap with the Puma logo on the front. But him and along with the five thousand two hundred members of the Twin Cities blocked the Interstate ninety-four, they started marching eastbound towards the Marion Street Bridge. He was about at least thirty feet ahead of the pack, holding the sign that read, "No justice, no peace". He had a stare down with all of the law enforcements blocking the pathway of ninety-four. He seen that they are armed with weapons, batons. Behind them were two more officers armed with automatic rifles. He was less than two we, two feet away from these cops. He chanted that, "Hands up, don't shoot". More law, law enforcements showed up from the police department. But they came in three Metro Transit City buses. So do the math of how many law enforcement came in less than one minute. And they was ready to shoot and kill five thousand two hundred people, which are all unarmed, no guns, no knives, no sticks. Even put down the media, even put down the media. Just signs and pictures of Philando Castile. Even kids as young as ten years old was amongst the crowd. Members of the Black Lives Matter made an announce, announcement. "Thank you for all of your support, but if, but if you're not willing to go to jail or possibly die tonight, please remove yourself from the highway immediately." About seventy percent of the crowd left the highway faster than Jimmy John's. But this guy stood his ground, and he seen that two of the unarmed, uh, he seen that two of the armed enforcements was hiding in the grass area of westbound ninety-four, possible sharpshooters. By this time, even the media chickened out and decided to record from afar. More white men in military gear came, armed with automatic assault rifles that can shoot up to forty rounds. Surrounded, the remaining thirty percent of the crowd, with the ten-year-old that was in the crowd. And yes, he is a little black African-American child, standing up for his rights. Finally, this masked man took off his disguise. He was wearing a suit. He approached the armed military, looked like officers, and said, "Don't shoot us. We have, we have..." We have, we have no weapons." And he decided to drop his business card and a copy of his phone ID right on the feet of these military men. He went back and locked arms with other members. He was the only monk person. Sadly enough, that was the story that the media will not cover. The story of the frontline, and the story, and the story of the true meaning of child endangerment. One hundred military uniformed men armed and ready to spit bullets at these kids, these teens, and these dedicated citizens that volunteer and are human, and are humility. All which are unarmed. What are you gonna do? Block their bullets with the pictures of Philando Castile? Furthermore, Star Tribune newspaper and media, if you're here, printed out a false and inaccurate story about the St. Paul Anthony, about the St. Anthony Police Department firing Officer Yanis. They did not fire him. They did not fire him. They never fired him. False story, false story. Truth is, Officer Yanis was never fired. He went back to work in less than thirty days after the murder. And the murder was live streamed on social media. In addition, Yanis was never, Yanis was even trained to start a different law enforcement career in a different city and location. If you're a cop and you kill a black man live on social media, you get a vocational education to a better job for free, that's what they're saying. My name is Tal John, and I'm not afraid to speak the truth. And I can provide all evidence and everything that I've said upon request. I'll leave my card right over there where the water is at. If they want evidence. Also, I want to make special thanks to a black woman. A black woman, a forty-one-year-old, pregnant, possibly on her third-term pregnancy. She marched these past three days, the whole time. St. Paul, Highway ninety-four, downtown Minneapolis, and the town of St. Anthony. She is running for mayor for Minneapolis. And her name is Nakima Larry Pounds. A black woman, a black woman. By the way, by the way, slavery was never outlawed. Slavery is still in effect and still not against the law.
My name's Mike. I am extremely concerned because, for the obvious reasons. But I'm also concerned because my dad was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, in nineteen forty-nine. Segregated South. And he was doing this talk in the sixties. When I went home earlier, I told my wife, I said, "Hey, they're having a community discussion at Neighborhood House. Do you wanna go?" And she's like, "What's the point?" I think that we all want help. But the problem is, none of us actually believe that it's coming. And the reason for that is, we've got five hundred years of history that says it's not coming. Help is not coming. Now, this is not an individual thing. I don't know you, you don't know me. I'm sure you're a lovely person. However, what you represent, government, every time, is against us. Every single time. These stories are every day. Every day, all day, that's right. This is a room of people, we have, Diamond, I don't know if she's still here. She videoed someone getting killed. I don't wanna point people out, there's a woman in this room whose husband was killed by the cops. We're asking for help, we don't believe we're going to get it. And here's how I know. If you think that after this meeting, something, anything meaningful, and you define what meaningful means, raise your hand if you think something meaningful will happen. We've got a couple optimistic people. If you believe that absolutely... If you believe that after this meeting, absolutely nothing will happen, please raise your hand. That's the problem. Nobody believes it. So my question is, what can happen? What can you guys do to help us believe? And the reason that's such an important question, from our perspective, yeah, we're getting killed out here. I've seen some terrible things. But what I hope that you understand is at some point, and we're nearing this point, at some point, people will stop regarding the law. And they'll say, "If I get shot and killed, then I'm just dead, so I might as well fight back." And that is when we have chaos. Nobody wants that. But if people are subjugated and beat down for centuries, centuries, hundreds of years. If people are beat down like that, and they don't have a voice, and they all believe, well, not all, but if most of them, the vast majority believe, that no matter what they say to their officials, nothing will happen. That's how you start to get people saying, "Well, if they won't listen to me, and I'm trying to knock on the door, and they won't open it, at some point, I'm gonna kick it in." The mayor is not here. The mayor is not here.
Where's Aldo?
We are here. So I just ask, what will you do? What will you do when people start to get to that point? Because I don't know what you've seen on...
I'm so there. Black pastors is looking real good right now.
Malcolm X, that was on or something. So we need to prevent this, and I'm telling you, real soon. I don't know what you've seen on your social media, but on mine, some brothers are getting strapped. Yeah.
And white allies.
And white allies too. We gotta fix this, and we gotta fix it right now, because, last thing I'm gonna say, I personally think that those whom are in charge, whether it be in schools, nonprofits, and most importantly, the government, are moving way too slow. They're still wanting to sit down and talk, and I've been done talking for a long time, and I'm only thirty-two.
So, I have to agree with him. I also wasn't surprised by this verdict at all. I'm the woman that, whose husband was killed, that he was just talking about. And he was killed about two months before Philando Castile was killed. And the video that Diamond shot was sent to me about two minutes after it was posted by a friend of Diamond's, whose son went to school with Diamond's daughter. And so I saw the video almost as soon as it hit Facebook. And when I saw the video, I actually at first thought maybe it would make a difference for a brief moment. I thought having a video of this live event so soon after my husband just got shot would change something, right? But that was so soon after what just happened to my husband that it was a falsehood, because I didn't realize what I was about to go through. And my husband was shot nineteen times, forty-nine bullets by the St. Paul Police. So, so there's no change. I mean, seven times to Philando, nineteen times to my husband. I don't know how many times to Cordell Handy. I speak to his mom regularly, and that's not a piece of information that she wants to share yet. But many, many times. So this is not going to change. I've attended many of these meetings, I met a bunch of them every time. And he's right, there's never any, there's never any feedback. We talk and talk and talk, and we come back to the meetings and we say, "What did you take from this meeting? What did you bring back to us from this meeting?" And there's not been one piece of feedback that comes back to us, ever. So, you know, Michelle Gross, I've talked to her regularly, and I told her this weekend, I said, "I'm not surprised by this, like, this doesn't surprise me that this didn't happen." I briefly thought, maybe they would charge him or convict him of the minor reckless discharge. Maybe, right? At the minimum, right? They would give him that, right? But I can't, I still wasn't surprised, right? But what, and I'm, but I'm disappointed, actually, that we didn't do more. I'm disappointed that all we did was shut down a freeway for a brief moment Friday night. I wish we would've burned some shit down, to be honest with you. Like, I'm sorry to say that, I'm sorry to say that. But I'm sorry that we are so Minnesota-nice. I'm sorry for that. Because I wish we would do more at this point. People are still dying. We are having meeting after meeting after meeting, and people are still dying. And I don't care that I'm white, I don't care that I'm supposed to be nice, I don't care. Most of the media's left already, they got whatever little piece that they needed to put on the news tonight, they've left. So at this point, who cares, you know? I have a great, I have a great job, some of my little, my clients, my Realtor, whatever, people probably would hate to see me say this stuff. But you know what? I'm tired. And you know what? I watched my husband get profiled over and over and over before he finally got killed. I watched it, I was with him eleven years, okay? So it wasn't a new relationship, it wasn't something that I just watched him die one time. I watched him get arrested twenty-five, thirty times, okay? So this wasn't new, this is something I watched happen over and over and over again. So what happened now that Yanis got cleared, is we're gonna watch more people die. Here, in this state, in this city, probably this summer, you know? And I can't live with this, you know, I can't. And I don't care that I'm white, I don't care that people say I don't have a bone in this fight. I do have a bone in this fight. My family has a bone in this fight. My nieces and nephews have a bone in this fight. And I'm tired. And I keep showing up to these meetings, because I don't know what else to do. You know, they're not, they're not helping. You know, people take notes, they send their, these people, you know? They send these people, but the real people that matter, you know, I don't know that it would've mattered if the real mayor came, because you know what? Both times I've seen him come, the last two times, he didn't know the difference between manslaughter and murder. So if you don't know the difference between manslaughter and murder, and you're running our city, how much do you matter anyways? But I'm tired, you know, I'm tired of coming. I appreciate that everybody showed up to voice their opinions and everything else, but you know what? I agree with what he just said, I don't think it matters anymore. I watch my news feed too, and I think people are fed up, you know? And I think if we don't move faster, I think if the city doesn't move faster, I think if the government doesn't move faster, I think we're in trouble.
Can I go? Elijah, I spoke earlier, I'm twenty-three, I jotted down a couple things. Everyone's here for a different reason, I mean, the reason you're here is probably where you came from, how you grew up, that's why you're here. I'm here, I'm a black man, I'm very feared by the community. But people say, "Where do you begin?" If there's hope, there, I believe there's hope, there's people. If you're willing to take this step, it comes with vulnerability. So this man, he's very extroverted, extroverted, I'm not. I'm an introvert, I never thought I'd be at this meeting, on the mic. But it's vulnerable of him, as a monk man, to speak about the black community, okay? So, and vice versa, while I'm more feared by police officer, that doesn't mean that his life isn't, this man's life here, isn't, it matters. It matters just as much as mine matters. And that's where I think the starting point for change is. Police officers, there's a lot of bad police officers, there's some that are good. But the ones that are bad, why are they bad? Because they were taught, at some point, people that are different, you're fearful of. So I think that's true. I asked the police officer the other day, I was at the gas station, not afraid to talk to people, I asked him, he's standing right in front of me, "What do you think of the verdict?" And he said, first he told me he pled the fifth, "I'm not gonna talk about it." Of course, I knew what he thought, it's silly for me to ask. But he said, "You know, you weren't there, you don't know what happened." So I have so many questions in my head that I think, two points I'm gonna touch on. There was someone that I was watching, from the media that was here. She, or she might be a nice person, but they were on their phone the majority of the time while they were standing there. So in my head, I'm thinking, is this a job, or is she sensible? She's gonna put this on the media, she might take a picture of me talking, put it on the media. But I'd be interested to hear them talk, the people that are posting about these things, putting these things out about black, Mexican, Asian, all the people that are doing the bad things, what do they think? Because they create biases, that helps people to form opinions of me, of him. Have you been discriminated against?
I was a four-time felon before, so...
All the time, people discriminated against him. So police officers, also another question in my head is, I wonder, is this a job, or are these people really sensible to be out here dealing with people? Because, for example, it could go vice versa. I'm very respectful, and I give everyone a chance when I talk, and they might be afraid of me, but I'm low-key and I keep it. I talk, I give you a chance, you give me a chance, cool. But the police officers, so if you grew up in Wisconsin as a white police officer, and you come to Minnesota, in Minneapolis, to work in a black community, north of Minneapolis, okay, so every day, the people that you're dealing with are criminals. So it goes from the people that you're working with not being people anymore. It's just a job, and it's a continuous cycle. So I think, there was a lady in here, I don't know who said it, people are the same, that's not true. And people that say that, no judgments toward them, it's not true, though. People are very different, and you have to respect the different people and understand, we're not the same, no one here is the same, everyone has different color. It's not about the color, but where you came from is different, and that's how you are. So you can't say, "He's black, he's Asian, he's the same." Everyone's very different, and people need to respect that.
Hello, my name is Monica, I'm a West Sider, I've been here pretty much most of my life, my adult life. One thing I wanted to share, or two things that come to mind. One, I live every single day with the aftermath of the devastation, what happens when lives are destroyed at the hands of government, at the hands of our police. Every single day, I face that. And what I wanted to share was that, A, nothing, nothing, nothing changes without a demand. Nothing ever has and nothing ever will. That's Frederick Douglass, "Power concedes nothing without a demand." Know that, never has, never will. We try to change things from within a system. Then I ask you, if you're this close to going against the law and taking things into your own hands, then I ask you to think about, when, if you're that close, if you have any hope left, to think about not being self-destructive as a person and as a community, but to think about what we could put forward. Put someone in office who has the track record, the demonstration of how they have made change. Do not vote for somebody who's talking about the status quo, what they're gonna do, they have all the right words. Vote for somebody that you've seen demonstrate and make that change happen. Don't get behind somebody who's been endorsed by the police. Don't get behind somebody who's been endorsed by the police union. Don't do that.
We've been doing that post-Seminarium, it's not working.
Don't do it, don't get behind somebody who's been endorsed by the police. Don't get behind somebody who's been endorsed by the union of the police. Get behind somebody you've seen make that change. That's all I got to say.
So, I came to a meeting so that I could put the mayor on blast right now. I love my community all day long. Real talk is, this man right here, this mayor, who's supposed to be standing here right now, evidently found something more important to have a discussion about a little girl who was just closely shot. If that was my daughter, if that was his daughter, would he be too busy? Real talk. Now I'm gonna let you know like this. Here, I don't know what it's like to be a white older woman. I don't know what it's like to be a monk male. I don't know what it's like to be a black male. But I tell you what I do know, I have my perspective. But unfortunately, in this world, including the mayor right now, by not his absence, doesn't feel like my perspective has value. It's those that are not at the opportunity to have the influence and the dominance in this society that are giving that value. Here's an example of that. In this room right now, what is the percentage of people of color? But the incident had to do with about a person of color, right? We don't see them in being involved in these sanitary areas, right? Because we don't feel like this is ours. So real talk, the mayor, our leader said, "Hmm, let's respond to this major issue that's happening in our community by putting him in a sanitary issue and getting the same results that we've been getting ever for the last five hundred years." Our leadership, who we pay chips to, way more money than I get, are telling me that this is their best. I'll tell you why they're telling me this is their best. Because that little black girl has nothing to do with him. If it was his daughter, I bet you he wouldn't be here. Real talk. Now watch this, now, real talk. I love my white peoples, I don't know what it's like to be you, but you- but you're privy to conversations that I can't get to. Because when white folk get together that happen to have racist ideologies, they have a tendency to blur up. And as soon as I sit at that table, they won't wanna have that conversation. So watch this. I'm tired of feeling this white guilt by saying, "I don't know what to do." Get in those conversations that influence them. Tell them to change their ways. Because that person might influence that next cop. That next cop thinks they're gonna pull me over, and I have my daughter in the backseat, and I don't want her to get shot. I'm willing to step it up, bro. Be real with that shoe.
Hello, my name is Alex. I was one of the eighteen protesters arrested on Friday night. I know there are others here, but everyone here is complaining about nothing happening. The one thing we are asking for is that the charges are dropped. The one thing that you can do for us is that the charges are dropped. When, when I was on that bus with eighteen other people, it was, it was a terrifying experience. Not terrifying, but the way that they treated us was inhuman. There was a girl who had been pepper sprayed in the face for a solid six to twelve seconds. And she was just sitting there, and they were giving her no medical attention at all. Everyone's restraints were on way too tight. Everyone's restraints were on way too tight. And people, we were on that bus for two to three hours. People had to pee. And, and, I'm sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker. But what frustrated me is that when people of color on that bus were asking to have their restraints loosened, the officers on that bus were doing nothing about it. They were doing nothing at all. They asked twenty to forty times, probably. And eventually, I got sick of hearing them ask no avail. So I asked the officer once. And after I asked that officer, then he finally loosened his cuffs. And, no. It's frustrating to see individuals treated like less than human. I don't have much else to say.
So I just wanted to say that we've been going to, I don't know how many meetings, city hall meetings, city councilmen walk out while we're talking. I've gone to NAACP meetings. I've gone to our midway, I don't know what it's called, community meeting at the library. I suggested to one of, they were talking about how we don't call in often enough, because there's always the debate, was that a firework or a gunshot? And they said, "You call in no matter what." And I said, "I'm scared to call in, because if it's not something and you see, and you come out anyway and see a community member, I'm afraid you're gonna brutalize them." And the officer at the time said that I need to behave, and I'm the problem. And that if I don't stay the eyes and ears of the community, I'm not allowed to call them when I need their help. Yeah, so what I would like to suggest to all the white people in the room is that-